That's right. Wasn't Ted always an overachiever anyway, sitting in the front row? Weren't you, Ted?
I like to sit about the second row.
Okay, there, yeah. Which means.
Mics, mic on? Mic on?
Mic's on.
Mic's on?
Yep.
Good morning, everybody. It is March 17th, 2020, 10:00 a.m. We are in the Board of Supervisors meeting. I will call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order and ask if anybody who cares to would join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me a second. I know this is a tough time for our country and our state and our county. And I sent an email out the other day that said, keep calm and carry on. We are a great team and we will get through this together. I believe that strongly and I'm asking everybody to. I'm sorry, I just, it's a tough time for everybody and I have confidence that we will do the best job possible for the citizens, residents of Story County, for our families, our friends and our coworkers. So, thank you all for being here today and thank you for observing social distancing. It's kind of strange, I know, coming in here and looking at it and seeing it being set a lot differently than it usually is, but it's an important thing for us to do and we will practice that.
Linda, thank you for leading us through this time. Okay? Yeah, thank you.
Well, it's a team effort. We're all in this together and we all need to remember that. And we will have some difficult times ahead. No, we will have, have times that are going to be stressful to all of us and it's just important for us to realize that everybody's doing their best job to assume good intentions and to work together. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you to everybody out in the community. And I would just encourage anybody watching this video to do your best to follow all the precautions that we are hearing about. Go to the Iowa Department of Public Health website. They have excellent information. And we will, as I said, get through this together. Check the county's website, storycountyiowa.gov for any updates. We will be updating regularly on county operations. Now, go ahead with our meeting today regarding adoption of the agenda. I would note a couple of things and ask for a couple of changes. First, we had a public hearing scheduled today. It's canceled. I don't see anybody here who might be here for that public hearing, but I wanted to make sure if there were any members of the public here that were here for the septic ordinance that we have postponed that indefinitely. Secondly, Keith Morgan, our emergency management administrator, is here and I would request that we, when we adopt the agenda, move his report up to the very next thing. He said he will be brief, but he has some things he needs to get to and he'd rather do the report today and get through that than, than wait till next week because he knows he's going to be busier. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the moving the agency report of Keith Morgan up to the next item.
Still moved. Second?
Any discussion? Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda's adopted. So, next, Keith, would you give us a report?
Good morning, and I'll dispense with any recap of the written report that I submitted and I'll just give you a quick update on where we're, what we're working on and where we're going with COVID-19 situation. Last week, we went to a Level 2 activation of our Emergency Operations Center, which means that within our own resources, we are starting to monitor the situation and take actions as necessary. Over the weekend, there was quite a bit of communication with Iowa Department of Public Health and also our local public health people. And Monday morning, we began with planning session with public health folks. As we did that, we stepped through normal planning processes to look at where we're at, what are our priorities and where we're going from there. We completed that process with briefing to the Board of Health at 7:00 last night and we will be pretty much implementing that plan and following up with some other training with Board of Health to help expand our knowledge and evaluate the situation and the roles and authorities that are associated with it for the Board of Health. Additionally, we are starting to begin contacts with our jurisdictional executives. This is probably one of the most unique situations as the, we typically are planning for one or two communities to take a hit at one time, but now we're looking at all of the communities at, at the same time. So, what we're going to try and do is look across the community, see where there's interactions between the communities as they take actions individually and as we take actions as, as Story County. We're going to be looking for those areas where we can optimize our resources, also make sure individual actions don't impact the actions of another jurisdiction or another agency that's out there. One of the primary areas that we're looking at right now is childcare. Again, that spans across all the jurisdictional areas. I am beginning to start some planning with Jean Cressy from United Way and other, other folks to start to evaluate this, looking at a whole bunch of different aspects to this, prioritizing how we make sure that we keep our critical and essential folks on the job, looking to make sure that we protect the interest of children that are not under normal supervision of the schools, also considering things like our homeless shelters and nutrition for the vulnerable populations. So, with that, we will be activating what we call Emergency Support Function 6, which is mass care, and we are going to start some planning this afternoon. Another area that we're going to have to start working on is refinement of our public information operations to, again, ensure that we offer the public verified, correct information and also to try and make it so that they can get the most important information probably on a regular basis. So, that will be one of the other things that we're looking at. So, with that, again, what we're looking to do is to, first off, figure out where we're at, determine what our priorities are, look at decision points down the road, which are changing practically hourly, and then develop contingency plans both for what's occurring now and what could potentially occur down the road, again, to optimize our resources, understanding that while we are working on that here, there are, every county across this state is working on this and that, that we will be interfacing, especially when it comes to resources that are tight, not only here, across the state, but nationally. So, with that, I will offer to answer any questions that I possibly can.
I just want to thank you, Keith, for the hours that you and Melissa are putting in, in the emergency management area and also how you have coordinated with, so far, how you've kept our chair in form, who's also Chair of the Emergency Management Commission, and she's been passing that information on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all you're doing as well and also appreciate you attending the Board of Health meeting last night. I know it made it for a longer day for you, but I think your input was very valuable to the board.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Keith. We will try to be as sparing of your time as possible and we realize that you and Melissa are a two-person shop and we will be looking at the, the county employees who are on your list to staff Emergency Operations Center and comparing that to our essential functions and seeing who we can get down there to help you as quickly as we can.
And I also intend to reach out to the other jurisdictions. I appreciate the support that I've always received from the board, but this is something that we hope that we can draw from all of our jurisdictions because it will be valuable for them to see the process firsthand down in the EOC.
And all hands on deck will be necessary.
Yes, ma'am.
All over.
Just one question.
Sure.
Okay. When you sent out the list that was passed on to us about people who are current county employees who are staffing some of the EOC's functions right now that you will need, I noticed that there were some who were like department heads, et cetera, and will be kind of essential in other functions also. Are you entertaining any volunteers coming in at this point? I mean, would you, if someone stepped forward to volunteer to learn a position from outside in the community, are you even interested in that or does that present more problems?
What I look to do, and as a matter of fact, I was crafting that before I came up here, is to identify what areas that we need, what those responsibilities would be for that. And some of them, definitely, we could, we can pull in other people and do just-in-time training for others. If we hit the point where we really start to expand out the, the EOC, I will need people that have already had previous training on it. So, right now, for instance, we are almost putting together a planning team that is outside the EOC when it comes to this sheltering plan. But once we get it up and running, then to some degree, I'll, I'll need somebody familiar with it as we do the maintenance part of it. But again, we're looking at maybe a couple hours a day or maybe even a couple hours a week to, to maintain those kind of activities, but if this ramps up to the point where we need to be doing a lot of interaction, then I may need to call upon those folks. We may need to do some just-in-time training, though.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks, Keith. Appreciate everything you're doing and everything you're going to be doing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good to have you on. Good to have you here. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is discussion and consideration of activating continuity of operations plan, FOSH, continuity of government. It says we may go into closed session to discuss portions of the plan considered confidential under Code Section 21.5K. I think we have a redundancy there. Okay. So, before we have a motion, I would like to ask our county attorney's office for this clarification. Could we bring some staff in who are public information officers and who are also helping, will help implement COOP COG from the Board of Supervisor staff? Is that okay?
Yes.
Into closed sessions.
Into the closed session. They might be helpful as we make decisions. So, it would be Noah McClatchy, Sandra King and LeAnn Harder. And is LeAnn here? Yeah, there you are. You're right. Okay. I was looking for you and you're right behind Brett. Okay. So, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we go into closed session.
I would second that under Iowa Code Chapter 21.5K.
Thank you for that. You're welcome.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Before we vote on it, though, may I just say that everybody's can stay in this room if you want to. I don't know how long we'll be in closed session. Ted, I know you've asked if you could do an update from your office on COVID-19. I will send you a text when we get back into open session. Is that okay? But I don't know that I can text everybody and say we're back in open session, but maybe somebody could figure. If you want to be back in, if you want to come back later, kind of keep track, maybe.
So, since we're in the discussion portion?
Yes, we are.
Before we vote, okay? I know that for me, if I can hear updates, anything new since last Wednesday when we had the department head meeting, before we go into closed session, that would be helpful for me, depending on the, I mean, because we're going to be discussing if we should activate the COOP COG or not. And so, situational awareness, as Mr. Morgan has stressed upon us, is the board's, you know, purveying responsibility. And I'm not sure if I have enough information to be able to go in and have this discussion in closed session yet.
Let me ask, let me ask a question then. How many, are there, are there department heads here who could give a brief one to two-minute update and would want to do so? Ted, Lucy? Okay, well, then, can I just, can we just hold on to that? Can we, I'm not sure exactly how we should do this. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Would you want to withdraw the motions and we can make them again? If, if you're wanting to hear from the department heads first succinctly?
I saw our attorney nod. That's the cleanest way to do it. Yeah, so that our discussion doesn't stray.
Yeah, I'm, I can withdraw the motion to go into closed session at this particular moment. And I accept also that. So, I sent them that withdrawal.
Okay, do we need to vote on that? It's been withdrawn.
Okay.
We're okay.
Yeah.
All right. And I would ask that you be very succinct, maybe one to two minutes. Ted, would you come to the microphone? County Treasurer, we'll give a quick update as what the issues are.
So, in the county treasurers, we have a group, group email account that everybody can go through. Yesterday, at the end of day, we had 12 treasurer's offices closing to the public. We had three more discussing at Board of Supervisors meetings. This morning, when I first came in, I said this is a list of, of counties I have. If you have anything different, I would really appreciate an update before our meeting. In the last 45 minutes, we've gotten about 10 to 15 more treasurer's offices that are closing to the public. In those situations, some of the counties are closing all offices. Other counties are keeping the doors open and allowing things by appointment only, limiting to, you know, one to two to three people in their lobby. Each county is doing what works for them. I just wanted to say my preference, because the governor has not suspended property tax late fees yet, would be that we keep the front doors of our building open. We have drop boxes available outside my office that we would rotate in and out on the hour. Our entire staff would stay and conduct transactions. I also think that we would close our doors to the public in the treasurer's office. We would stay and work. We would be spending most of our time on the phones, I believe, explaining the situation to people. And we would just keep the drop boxes available for payments in either property taxes or motor vehicle pending some sort of extension by the governor. I think our staff can stay and do work. I would just prefer, we have roughly between 100 and 300 people come through our office every day. I would prefer they come, come in. And why I'm asking that, the front doors stay open, is we do have a box in the, in the parking lot, but the amount of money that can come in in these property tax payments, we would just as soon have that where they have to pass two video cameras, come into the building and be seen.
I'm just going to make a comment there. We need to think about whether other offices were, if we were closing the treasurer's office, we would need to think about whether other offices in this building were closing as well and if yea or nay, what access that gives people to the entire building. That's the only thought I have about what you're saying. Are there any other questions?
Just one question, Ted. So, if you would be closing the doors to your treasurer's office, if someone had some questions or needed to, are you going to have some sort of posting that they could?
Yeah. We would put up a sign that say, you're free to call us. We have the two drop boxes there. We would be happy to do, but we just, we don't feel like we would let anybody come in by appointment. We have too many people in Story County. That's, we're too big of a county to set up an appointment for everyone and we don't want to open the door for one and then have to open it all. And I understand what Linda said. That's just my preference. If we cannot allow that, we do have the drop box in the parking lot, but it has its limitations.
Sure. Thank you.
So, I have a. Go ahead. Ted? Okay. Have you polled your employees yet to ascertain which employees might indicate that they're not going to be able to work at some point, given either due to childcare concerns, which I understand is legal to ask, or if they've self-disclosed on age or health, being concerned that they may not want to come in?
We have not polled the office at all in any way, but currently in our office, we only have two employees, myself and one other employee, who have children under the age of 18. So, we would have a limited impact due to the school closings, childcare issues.
And I'm just going to say, and we haven't done anything here yet, that, that we shouldn't talk about in open session, I don't think, but I'm just going to encourage everybody. You all know the COOP COG. You all know there's a lot of confidential information in it. So, let's make sure to state that we're in public session right now, not a closed session discussing. You know, we're just taking input.
Any other?
Thank, yeah, and thank you for coming in earlier and suggesting that it might be. I'm going to go to the recorder next.
Stacy Harridge, Story County Recorder. So, our Recorders Association, we have a mass email. There have been quite a few county recorders' offices that have closed to the public. A couple of them have offered, they set a table outside of their office for forms and applications that the public can gather, including their phone number. We do have a lot of things that are online capability. The only thing that's really time-sensitive in the recorder's office is the recording of documents. We do have a statewide portal that they can do that, but they may need assistance to, to access that. So, I would recommend that our office closes, but our staff remains in the office. You know, we'll continue to answer the phone, email, be as helpful as we can to the public and then, you know, obviously go with what the Board of Supervisors decides.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy Harridge?
Oh, same one. Sorry, that I asked Ted.
What's that?
Number of people have you polled to see who might be affected by a childcare situation?
I have not. I, I just basically told them that we will do whatever the board recommends and then we'll just take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Auditor next?
Lucy Martin, Story County Auditor. Like Ted and Stacy, the auditor's affiliate has, it's called Basecamp, but we trade information. As of yesterday, a lot of counties were, at today's board meeting or later in the week, we're going to discuss what to do with their public buildings. So, I think there are a couple that have closed to the public, but for the most part, no action had yet been taken. So, I don't have a, a good feel for that. I do know that I have deadlines approaching that cannot be changed, that are not under Secretary of State's emergency powers when it comes to elections. That's this Friday at 5:00 p.m. for nonpartisan candidates filing for the general election. And then next Wednesday at 5:00 p.m., which is partisan candidates filing for the primary election. And I cannot accept those electronically. That's not allowed under law. A lot of those, those also need to be notarized. A lot of times, people use us as their notaries. I have to examine those papers. They can mail them, but then they're, with the deadlines approaching, I don't think anyone probably wants to mail things. So, if the building were to close to the public, I would literally have to be in the parking lot accepting paperwork through next Wednesday. Somebody in my office who's a notary and can examine candidate papers. So, my preference would be that the auditor's office remain open. Once candidate paperwork is filed, those are public records and anyone can come in and examine them and then file an objection and that, the date to file an objection for the partisan papers is March 30th. So, there, all those deadlines are in mind. And then we have cities and the county certifying budgets that has to happen by March 31st. Again, the cities can mail those in, but we have to check that paperwork. So, I'm dealing with a variety of, of deadlines right now. My preference would be at least my office would remain open. We do have pretty limited foot traffic compared to the recorder or the treasurer's office. No one in my office has expressed concerns or needs. We do have luckily only one person with children under the age of 18, so childcare is a very limited issue. And I have marked on the floors at my counter, so the six-foot distance that people can choose to socially distance. We're not mandating that, but, and we do have wipes and Purell available, so. At least, at least for the month of March, I would really prefer that I don't affect my, the hours of my office. If I have to make arrangements, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
So, any thoughts if we were to close other offices in this building and leave yours open? And I certainly understand what you're saying is there's things you just can't do electronically or online. It's just in its election integrity.
Yeah, they can't be extended and they can't be adjusted. Yeah.
Would the Secretary of State's office or would the governor? Because I know the governor was given certain emergency powers by the legislature. Might they be able to change that?
Maybe. The Secretary of State's office issued us an update this morning saying they do not have the power to extend deadlines.
They do not have the power.
Or to change the format that those come in. You know, they, they require wet signature. I cannot accept those electronically.
Okay. Any other questions for the auditor?
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy. Appreciate it very much. Let's see. Veterans Affairs?
Good morning. Brett McLean, Story County Veterans Affairs. Reached out to our commission, our five-member commission, and of course, we have, this is a few days ago, we have stopped our outreach programs, of course, nursing home visits, jail visits, home visits. And we're going to try to do as much as we can via phone interviews and email interviews with veterans and surviving spouses and minimize having them, you know, face-to-face interviews with those folks. We can do quite a bit, you know, just via phone and emails. And of course, our, under our association, I haven't heard back from them yet on any other offices, but our spring school is postponed. So, they're going to kick it, kick it out to February, or to the, the fall. So, that's kind of where we're going with that, so.
So, Brett, are you saying that you think you can close to the public? Are you close to the public but stay?
I wasn't thinking that way, but as I'm, yeah, I kind of, that's what we're looking at doing. There may be a point in time if, as we're developing claims, that we will have to meet with them. But there's a, there's a lot of stuff we can do via phone and email prior to meeting with them and, you know, working through things like that. And possibly, we could do a whole claim without even meeting with the veteran.
Like scanning something and sending it to signature if they have the capabilities? I mean, sometime they're going to find out something you can't do, but.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're talking about staff continuing to work and provide services?
What's that, ma'am?
You're talking about continuing to provide services, just trying not to do it in person?
Right. Right. That's kind of what we're, yeah, we're looking at doing that and as much as possible, so.
Any questions for Brett?
I know it's a very, very small department, two of you, but just, I'm going to ask, are there, is there anticipation about any childcare issues that may come up or?
No.
Self-disclosure about health?
No. I don't think there's any childcare issues for us.
Super. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm going to, since Community Services is co-located with Veterans Affairs, I'm going to ask Carla to go next. Carla Webb, Community Services.
Good morning. Carla Webb with Community Services. Our office is, we met this morning, discussed things. Most of our staff have individual offices. We have arranged it for the front office staff because we have three people that sit up there. We've moved one person to the back part of the office so that we have the six-foot social distancing. We do have the Plexiglas window separating our interior office from the lobby, so I think that that's. think that that does provide a pretty good barrier for us. We would have one staff member, I believe, with potential childcare issues. We are limiting travel, and if individuals do come into the office, trying to work with them through the lobby window. If we do need to bring someone in, I've asked staff to bring them in through the back hallway and into our conference room so as to avoid bringing them through the entire office. I've asked them to avoid meeting with individuals in their office. We'll use our conference room and disinfect after each time that we've been, been in that room. Our general assistance program, I think that one may be a little bit trickier for us to administer, right, typically how that program is set up is it's in-person interviewing, so we have made all of our forms fillable, PDF documents, so that we can send those out via email to individuals. They could complete them if possible and send them back in. We've also discussed completing applications via phone. Think the challenge there is, is we're not going to be able to get signatures on those applications. So I am also thinking about possibilities that we may need to bring to the board to make modifications on the application process for the general assistance program. For MHDS services, we are hearing from providers of measures that they're implementing and limiting visitors, and going to meetings via phone, phone conference, Zoom meetings, those kinds of things.
Questions for Carla?
I have one about, well, first of all, thanks for coming in, because technically you're on vacation.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, so about the GA in person. In your discussion this morning, was there any discussion about a possibility of an increased need?
We do anticipate seeing that. We have already had a couple of folks come in yesterday who are affected, they're in the service industry, and they've already been told not to come in for the next several days. So we are reaching back out to those folks, giving them the information about Iowa Works and applying for unemployment benefits. But yeah, I do anticipate we'll see an increase.
Excuse me, Carla, you talked about having the fillable applications or whatever. Is there an ability to do an electronic signature, or do you need?
We haven't, yeah. Well, we haven't figured that out quite yet. I think there are a couple of applications that would allow for that, but I don't know if the person on the receiving end, the one, the person filling that out would need to have that application. So that's, yeah, something we need to explore some more.
Thought on that, is there a computer that's on our network that's in your waiting room?
No.
Okay, because it's my understanding the library is closing. So for people who are of low me, income means, or possibly just technologically challenged, where are they going to find a computer?
Right, right. And so that, that is a concern for us if our office were to close, is for those individuals who do not have those electronic means.
Any other questions for Carla? I think you're going to have a real tough balancing act there, because we know there's going to be people in the community who are going to need your services more than ever, and figuring out how to do that, how to maintain social distancing, how to keep people from, you know, doing as much as you can, and yet we realize you may have a time, as Brett's saying, you folks may have the time when you just got to meet with somebody personally. You've thought that all out. I think that's an excellent plan that you've done. That's, that's a good model, I think, so thanks for doing that.
You bet, thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
Sue.
Yeah, Sue, Animal Control, would you come next? And then, then I'm going to ask, yeah, I've got, I'm trying to do a list here. Go ahead, Sue, thank you.
Sue McCaskey, Story County Animal Control. So yesterday, the Ames Shelter, we were kind of waiting to see what other shelters were doing. The Ames Shelter came out with something that said basically that their visits and tours of the shelter are suspended as of yesterday, that they will be conducting adoptions by appointment only, and no appointments would be allowed in the shelter unless they were approved for adoption. The volunteer program they're suspending, they're also suspending donations, not taking owner-surrendered animals, and it will be on a judgment call, pretty much on what the animal control services will be. They're following the guidelines of the ASPCA, the Humane Society of the United States, World Health Organization, and places like that. Last night, my understanding is that the Boone Shelter also adopted this as kind of what they're going to plan on doing. And so for us, you know, there's a couple of questions that I'm going to need verified, but I guess I would make the same, if it were me, I would make the same recommendations that these shelters are following, as far as, you know, being closed and not having our volunteers right now, and not having people bring in donations, and so on, so on. We can take applications by phone, and we can email people applications, so that process can keep going. And we're going to keep our, our website, our Facebook page, and also the county website updated with all the pictures of the available animals. We don't have any staff with children under 18, so childcare will not be a problem for us. We plan, if this were to go forward, to put a sign on our front door that would say, for somebody that's unexpectedly shown up, to say something to the effect of, please call this number, have our shelter number on there, and have us talk via them outside us inside at this point, just to see what they are needing. Also, the contract cities, I'm going to need to talk to you guys about that one too, because that is something that could come into play as far as service. A lot of times with contract cities, we do not, and it's the same way with calls out in the county, we do not just go to a centralized location for pickup. We go to a person's house. And after-hours calls is another thing, you know? People will say, I caught a dog, I have it in my house with me, can you come and get it? So we're going to have to change some of that, I think, protocol a little bit on how we're going to handle strays. But I guess those are the things right now at this point that concern me the most, and I would like to kind of follow what the other shelters are doing in the area, because I feel that would be a good plan for us.
So you still would have people come in to adopt?
No, we would do our applications online, and we would take phone applications.
And Ames said they would call, residents may call to schedule an adoption appointment?
Yes, and that would be, for us, it would be when we have an approved application, then that person could come in and we would schedule an appointment.
Just to clarify, that, that person would be looking at the animals online, and then the appointment would be to come in and meet the animal. And so you still would be having some interaction?
Yes.
Okay.
So are you going to take the animal outside?
Well, a dog, I wouldn't feel comfortable with a cat, but, you know.
That's where these face-shirting cats came from.
I know. But, you know, I would just like to kind of keep that part of it open, and as this goes on, you know, we may have to look at other things and change other things, but right now, this would be my main concern.
You could take a cat out in a cage.
Yeah, people want to interact, though.
True, okay, well, and it's not normal times. I mean.
No.
Lawrence, did you have?
Yes, okay. I heard that the other shelters were talking about not accepting owner surrenders. I'm, would like, I'm concerned about us not doing that.
Okay, so here's what I see at this point, it's already happened when the Ames Shelter closed as of yesterday, we already had people that need to surrender animals calling us.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's not our jurisdiction, we've helped out before, that's what we do. But I think that putting animals up for adoption is a pet owner's responsibility, but in an extreme circumstance, we would take them.
So and, and that's where I am on this, because what's going to happen, if we don't accommodate those people to putting up for adoption, those animals are going to be released. We end up, and I think Ames has too, but they have their own thoughts, et cetera, on this, all right? So then we've got animals out there who are getting hurt, we may have some animal up, increase in dog bites from scared animals, pets, et cetera. And I do think that our, we call it the shelter, but our legal mandate is actually animal control. So Sue, I'd like to really have more discussion later on about whether we want to enact that.
Yeah.
We may, you know, I just.
Yeah, I, my only concern with it, and I'm open for discussion, just figuring out, is capacity. Because if Ames is not doing, if you have Boone that's not doing it as well, people are going to figure out a way, and then we're going to get over capacity and not able.
Right now, we're in the best situation, thankfully, that we've ever been in for probably the last three years.
Yeah.
Our cat numbers are down, we have three dogs. So we have other smaller animals. But what I'm saying is, we do have some capacity, but then I have to look at the people that work there, if they get sick, who's going to be able to come in and take care of all these?
If you had discussion, or would, or if not, would it be worth having discussion with the directors in Ames and Boone? And maybe to say to them, we're getting calls, are, we're concerned, are, is there a recon, you know, can we work together on this?
Well, so Ron and I from the Ames Shelter did speak yesterday, and what we're, what we've agreed on is if my staff gets sick, we would go over and help them at their shelter and vice versa. So we want a backup plan there, because we still have to come in and do what needs to be done. As far as, I think, I think what we need to do is, we need to talk about that. I know what they're going to say. They're going to say that's just what we're doing right now, and that's how it's going to happen. But we are not a very good shelter as far as leaving people in the lurch. If somebody has a cat that they're calling a stray and it's been at their house two years, it's not a stray. But if somebody's got a horse and it's on the, on the highway, and we don't know who the owner is, we're going to go. And I think those are how we're going to have to weigh our circumstances.
Any other questions for Sue? Thank you very much. I'm going to go Planning and Development. Jerry, do you have some things you'd like to?
Governor Reynolds just declared a public health disaster emergency and is ordering all bars and restaurants to close.
Okay.
Thanks, Ted.
Just so you were aware.
Thank you.
I wondered if that wasn't common. Thank you.
Good morning. Jerry Moore, Planning and Development. As far as our operations go, nothing really has changed that much. We did actually, as of yesterday, receive a couple of in-person submittals for development cases. Most of what we deal with, probably 75% of our interaction with the general public is, is through email, phone calls, that kind of thing. I think my preference would be to, if the staff could, you know, be in our office, we're probably going to be most effective. We can operate from home if we need to, but again, I think we're going to be probably most effective in accessing the different things that we access if we're here. And we have a small staff, four people. I did not poll anybody, but two of those employees do have young, young children.
I see Margaret James isn't here. Did you possibly have any discussion with Margaret since she's co-located in your office?
We've been talking on and off. She has two staff, and I, I know one has somebody that's in school, I think middle school.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry? Then you're saying, close to the public, but keep staff working in the office and do work online?
Right, we can do either, we're ready to go with whatever the board chooses.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Joby? I'm going to ask Joby to speak, I'm going to ask Barbara to speak, I'm going to ask Todd to speak, and I'm going to ask Ethan to speak next. Okay, is there anybody else who needs to speak or wants to? Okay, Joby, Facilities Management, please.
Joby Brogdon, Facilities Management Director. If the county's operating in any fashion in any building, our staff, we're anticipating working as normal with modified duties as things change. We do have normal day-to-day, we have measures in place for short staff periods, a lot of that is just modified duties, so. We do have three employees with small children, we have some that you could classify them, their spouse is like a high-risk category, so I anticipate losing staff for things like that. Said we just modify duties as needed, you know, maintenance techs are performing disinfecting, that's, that's how we handle it. You know, we have buildings that have other agencies in those buildings, so how you handle that, like the Human Services Center has the Department of Human Services located in it. So I spoke with DHS yesterday, and they're anticipating on staffing two people at the front counter, their office at the Human Services Center to, they still have to provide services to people, so that building most likely going to have to maintain the front doors open on yet, you know, so.
I know that yesterday, I think it was through the governor's press conference, talked about ramping up to about 2,500 statewide, the DHS workers being able to work from home, although understanding that direct hair cannot be able to do that. So I'm assuming you're staying in some, maintaining that conversation with them to see if they are, to the extent that they're going to need?
Yeah, and that was, that was, early yesterday morning, I spoke with Pauline Rutherford about the Ames office particularly, and at that time, that was their plan, was is to leave two staff at the front desk, and then the majority of the staff there could work from home, but some may choose to work from their office, so.
Got you, okay.
So there may be updates.
Yeah.
If, Lawrence, did you have questions?
No, because Joby already answered it about children and risk.
Okay, my question is, if we close the office, or close a building, what do you need to keep doing to keep our buildings secure? Are you, are you thinking about that?
Yeah, secure-wise, I mean, we have our keyless entry system, we already have measures that are part of daily duties to check doors and windows and that at the end of each shift. Our staff, we, even if we close the buildings, I anticipate Facilities Management staff will be working as normal, because we still have to keep all the systems working, and if there's personnel working in the building, we still have to clean and disinfect as, as we would, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Joby, or any other thoughts you have for us?
Right now, I think that's all I got.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ethan Anderson to come up next and talk about County Attorney's Office, what you see there.
Ethan Anderson, County Attorney's Office. So we had some guidance from Supreme Court Chief Justice Susan Christensen to close, or cancel all criminal jury trials and civil jury trials until after April 20th. That, in effect, shut down a lot of our public foot traffic. There won't be juries in the building, there won't be defendants in the building. So in essence, the office can continue working with very little disruption from the, very little interaction with the public, aside from defense attorneys, which is pretty routine. And then locally, court admin has approved initial appearances over electronic means, so that should cut down even more interact, face-to-face interaction. So as of this morning, talking with Tim Mills, the county attorney, it's the intent to keep the office open, and.
There will be some judicial branch activities going on.
Yes.
So the courts, the court area will need to be kept open, the clerk's office will need to be kept open, I'm presuming.
That's correct.
And those are on the way to your office, so it would be, and then the sheriff's offices, they're also, so, so what will, maybe, I'm just, so, that might be a reason to keep that building open to the public, but maybe some limited access. I'm just speculating. Have you talked to the sheriff at all?
I haven't.
Okay. I do know that you were out at Secondary Roads earlier today. Do you have any, did you, did Darren share some thoughts with you?
Yes, I was talking with, with Bree this morning and, and Darren, and there was a desire on Darren's part to close some of the remote shops, I think Roland and Slater shops to public access, but still provide services. So it'd just be, they can interact with Secondary Roads shops over the phone, or calling Darren, Darren's office over the phone. But there's a desire to close some of those remote locations to public access.
Okay, but not here?
Not here.
Okay.
And he indicated waiting, willingness to wait on board direction for what to do.
Any other questions for Ethan?
No.
Not at this time.
I'm sure there'll be ones that come up.
Okay. Let's see. Barb, would you like to give a report from IT? Thank you, Ethan.
Barb Steinbach, Story County IT. Where should I start? We're being inundated with calls requesting laptops and VPN, and we're holding off on that until we get direction from the board. We do have licensing to accommodate All Story County employees. However, if All Story County employees were working from home and tried to remote in, it would crash our system. We've limited it to 30 per building. And the reason for that is, when you're here in the building working, you're accessing the system a different way. You're inside. When you're trying to access it from outside, that takes a lot more resource. So, I would encourage each department to evaluate the needs for working from home and exactly, you know, what they need to access, and maybe we can do it in shifts. We do have two people in our department who would be affected by childcare. Luckily, if the building was shut down, we all have access to the system. We have a go-bag. We can all remote into our computers at work. So, there's no issue there. We do have five laptops available for loan. We ordered five more per our budget for this year. So, potentially, we'll have 10 if we need, and, and we don't even know if those five we ordered are available. We have not received confirmation. So, I'm sure there's a run on those. But if we do initiate VPN access for persons who do not have a Story County-owned device, the VPN policy would have to be modified because it does not allow for that.
Say that again, Barb.
Our VPN policy states that you must use a county-owned or managed device to access the system.
Okay.
So, if people are requesting VPN access for home computers, we may have to modify or, in an emergency situation, decide not to follow that policy. I would still request that everybody sign it, who is being granted VPN access.
Okay. Um, I have one question. There used to be several laptops that the auditor's office used, but now the auditor's office is using tablets and those, because it was, it was in the, that, that was something we thought was available, that there were extra older laptops. Are those no longer available?
That was over a year ago.
There's 20. Those are...
I'm sorry. I need to ask you, but could you come to the mic?
We have, uh, I talked to Kevin about this yesterday. We have 20 of our old secondary laptops, which means they did never had the election database on them. So, we don't have to remove the motherboards for somebody else to use them. They are pretty low-power laptops. They are not, they were used to hold one pretty small program and not talk to the internet. So, they're not the most robust machines. But, and I would need those back by September 1st, at any rate, because I need them for the general election, which is why we kept them. So, they're probably not, they're, they're an option, but they're probably not a great option, is all I'm going to say.
Do they have an operating system on them?
I think they are updated to the latest Windows operating system that, as of last...
Okay, so they're licensed.
Yeah.
The precinct analyst ones?
Yeah. They're the old secondary.
Yeah.
ASUS machines, so. But, yeah, they, they were sort of end-of-life when we stopped using them. I don't think that's changed. They have, they have all been cleaned and repurposed so that we can use them for other, other issues, so.
Super. Thank you, Lucy. And Barb, what else would you?
I've had several requests about conference calls. We do have the free conference call we've been using. I wouldn't recommend that as we don't know where that data is stored or sold. We did set up a conference bridge for you, Linda, for, under your extension. Orion has been very accommodating. They've released emergency access to conference calls, conference call bridges. I guess I would recommend every office just have one anyway. And it is, it does require a premium license. We saved some money by moving away from premium licensing, but it would be an option for each department. I would just recommend it.
What would be a cost there, do you know?
It's an additional, I can't tell you for sure, about a $5 additional charge per month.
Okay.
And then long-distance charges apply.
Was that, I, were you asking, was it per phone?
Yeah.
Did I hear you say, was that, was that the additional $5 per phone?
Whoever has the premium license.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. Coming back to clarify here, you said so that if we had a lot of people working from home, you are saying that you anticipate there should only be 30 per building?
Correct.
And you were saying on at a time. So, people may, you know, you could maybe get everybody on with assignments, all right? So, but then, all of your people have to go bags. Are the, are your people included in the 30 for the admin building?
We would be accessing different things.
Okay.
The servers and things, which, the casual user would be mostly accessing the storage and the email.
All right. Okay. Then, in the five laptops and, and five more ordered?
Correct.
So, they'd be checked out from your department?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then, and as far as modifying the policy about the county-owned versus, you know, and now saying that you could hook somebody up, like, all three of us have laptops.
Sure.
So, right. So, so then we could modify that. And that, and so, that might be something you might want to start working on, what, how it would have to be modified anyway?
Or maybe a separate policy for emergency, for COOP cog use.
Well, those are two separate things, Barb. Activating the COOP cog is different than if we would just say we would like to give more users access.
Security first?
Okay.
Anything else for Barb?
Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see. Todd, could you give just a, a minute or two, update if you want to? You don't need to.
Oh, I did have another question for Barb. I'm sorry. It's, you know, Barb, could you come back up here? So, good. Sorry about that, Todd, but just trying to get everything I need to know, to, I feel I need. All right. Okay. Barb, going back to the conversation we had with community services, or I asked the question about, is there a computer in their lobby for the public to use? Is, do we have a desktop that would be available to move out to community services slash VA services lobby to, for members of the public to be able to use?
There is a laptop, isn't there, at the front desk?
Sure. Yeah. It's on the other side of the glass. We just have to move it.
Yeah. So, there's already an option there.
We have one there.
Is that laptop?
Could you speak to that?
Yeah. So, there, sorry.
To the microphone.
Um, we've polled our staff. If we did have to go to teleworking, we have two staff that do not have home computers. We have one extra laptop for use, and then we would probably try and use that other laptop that's at the front counter right now.
Okay. So, now we're back to my question, please. Okay. Thank you, Carla.
But, um, we do have an extra desktop that's set up that the employee from the front office that we moved to the back is using. So, if needed be, we could relocate her desktop to free that one up, I guess.
Okay.
And I would assume that would be, you would set that up as a guest user so they wouldn't have any access? Because you asked earlier, is this something that's on the network? Wouldn't, you wouldn't want that on the network?
I don't know if there's a network connection in that anteroom. Is there? So, we might have to be creative. I'm sure we could work something out.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Todd Lombard, Risk Manager for Story County. Um, and, uh, just an overall update on the situation. I just want to make people aware that, um, we're doing all this, uh, social distancing and stuff to help stop the spread. Uh, the latest information is still saying they're expecting 60 to 70% of the population to obtain this virus at some point. Um, and what we're doing is slowing that down. And the reason we're slowing that down is to help the medical field to be able to handle the situations when they arise. Because they can handle a lot of people, but they can't handle everybody at once. So, that's the whole point to all of this. And I've been in meetings every day with this, with this virus and reading information, helping people answer some questions that they've had come up. I think we have a, a good mindset behind it. I think we, uh, we're handling it the best we can with the information we're receiving, and, and we are, uh, adapting as needed. So, I, I feel comfortable with what's going on. For myself, I can work remotely. I have the laptop. So, if, if that needs to, if that comes about, it will. Um, I'm planning on being here every day just because we have people working. Therefore, I need to be here in case an incident needs to be investigated or something like that pops up. So, um, that's where I'm at with it.
Any questions for Todd?
So, Todd, can you elaborate on that a little bit about, in case an incident pops up? Well, so, we have the normal parameter that you've got with someone's injured on the job, et cetera. Okay. But what do you see your role about incidents when it comes to, uh, social distancing, or people coughing, or that kind of thing? I mean...
So, um, right now, there's, there's no regulations on, even if somebody comes in coughing, you, we can't shut them down or anything. We still have to do our best to serve them. At this time, the suggestion is to, you know, get the best information you can from the person, possibly have them leave the information sitting in paperwork or something somewhere. Depending on your documentation, I would strongly suggest that they do the electronic version and get them directed to that electronic version of the information if at all possible. And then, uh, we're gonna, you know, we're just gonna, we're gonna maintain that minimum of six feet and, uh, do our best to operate from there. I mean, it's hard to describe every single situation that's going to come up.
But we can't force anybody to do that.
No, we cannot.
Okay.
So, there's no regulation. And again, this, we, we need to pay attention to what's being said. So, even the new regulation for groups of 10 people, it is a recommendation. It is not a requirement. And so, um, we need to pay attention. And, and, uh, I get, I get told I'm very heartless at times, and it's not that at all. It's just that I have to read the regulation and follow what the regulation says. So.
Any other questions for Todd?
No.
No.
And, and we appreciate your concern about safety. And if you find things, and, and you're looking at that, that you think all employees could be, could be useful, just send that, continue to send those out.
Yeah. And the, the one other, uh, so, I've had a lot of questions about the face mask. Face masks, as I just put it, they're simply not available. If you want to put a face shield on, you can. And believe it or not, they are showing up at work sites to get a shield over your face. Um, it's, you know, you're not going to win, you're not going to be in GQ magazine lead with it. But, you know, it is effective, and it does the job that it's required to do. So.
Thank you. Um, Noel, do you have any updates from HR you'd like to give right now? Sandra, do you have any updates to give right now? Should, think that we should hear before we go into deliberations.
Sandra King, Director of External Operations and County Services. I just wanted to note that I did talk to Darren Moon, the county engineer, this morning. And he noted that he was, he would be able to close to the public and do a lot of, um, business online and over the phone, except for the maintenance staff. They work outside. But he did specifically say that he would be able to close to the public.
To, to close the buildings to the public, but to have staff continue?
Staff continue to work.
Okay. So, he's talking about the main facility, really?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other updates?
That was it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sandra.
Thank you.
I have been talking, there's some people who aren't here, and I want to make sure that when I have information from their departments, or if anybody else does, we share that. Um, I'm going to start with the assessor. Wayne sent an email yesterday, said he had called his inspectors back out, not doing inspections right now. Did say he had additional foot traffic at his office yesterday morning, more than he usually sees in a week. And that's kind of a concerning thing when we're recommending social distancing and people standing away from each other. Conservation, the Board of Conserva, Conservation, Conservation Board gave authority to Mike Cox to close the buildings to the public. Uh, Mike was concerned because there were lots of people who were out because schools are closed. And he was concerned about that. I, he contacted me. I said, I, you know, Board of Conservation has said, you know, wanted to do that. I had no problem with them doing that. I understood that. Um, the sheriff yesterday sent out a press release, I think you've seen, closed the jail to in-person When I've been talking with Keith Morgan, our Emergency Management Administrator, and he's talking about what they might do with the, the childcare issue, and that has become an emergency management responsibility through the governor's, uh, I don't know, it's a proclamation or whatever, said, you know, locals, you have to deal with childcare. Um, if we have any non-essential staff that we could help, we say, could you help out emergency management in the next days, weeks to come? Please consider that and talk to your staff about that. I mean, look at, you know, who you think you could spare, who is an essential, and that, I know, may depend on some decisions that we make. But let's think about that because I, it is Keith and Melissa, you know? That's, that's it, and it's county employees. So, whatever we can do, maybe they're not people who normally are staffing the command center, but they, somebody who might be able to help, reach out to Keith. I would, and we would appreciate that. Um, I don't know if there's any HR implications, but talk with Noel about that, if you would.
One question I have for you, Linda.
Sure.
With the assessor's office. I know you said not doing fieldwork, and they had a lot of traffic at their desk. Are they proposing, suggesting that they would like to close their offices as well?
I can't remember specifically if Wayne was suggesting it, but he certainly sounded like he would be a...
Or just acknowledge that.
Stacy's nodding. You've talked with him.
No, I didn't. But we had a huge influx of people yesterday.
You did as well. So.
Yeah.
Okay. For the record, Stacy, you just said they had a huge influx as well. That's okay. I can repeat stuff, you know, rather than...
Stacy, was there a particular type of service or document they were after? Were they after their marriage certificates, birth certificates, you know, that they needed?
I would say, we, we did have a lot more, more people in the office yesterday. Um, we had, did nine passports yesterday.
Oh, interesting.
We had a couple of elderly couples come in to get their marriage certificate so they could get the real ID. So, I think, um, you know, I, I'm, it's important to help the public, but I also think about their risk and my employees' risk. So, so we did see a big influx yesterday.
Sure.
With spring break, maybe. I'm not sure. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, um, let's see. We covered the assessor, Conservation, the sheriff, to the extent of the jail. Are there, who are we missing information from, either director and direct information? What other departments? And...
I think we have...
...do I get here?
I know.
We've, we've pretty much, okay.
You can have...
Either, either people have been in touch with us, or we've heard from you today. And I really, um, this turned out to be very, very useful. That was a good suggestion. Thank you, Lois. I really, I really appreciate you showing up. I know you have interest in what, you know, obvious interest in what we do. And are there any other comments or discussion before we consider a motion again?
No.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Then, oh, Jerry. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand again.
Jerry Moore, Planning and Development. I just want to add, I forgot to tell you, again, we're planning on having the Board of Adjustment meeting tomorrow. I had an email from the chair inquiring if it was still being held. Um, we have two cases. We're not anticipating a lot of, um, input from the general public. We've reached out to those applicants and told them that they can call in. And I know for sure, one is planning on doing that. They're from out of state. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that there's that question about whether or not we're having the Board of Adjustment and public meetings in general.
And that brings up a question. Um, Board of Health, Board of Supervisors, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment. What other boards might there be that we need to consider and work with?
Well, one is, I know, CICS.
CICS. And they meet here?
They meet here. Although, um, they may postpone this month's meeting. Um, we're just, we're still waiting. We got an email. Carla and I got an email. So, we're kind of waiting for some... waiting for some guidance on that. They may be delaying, uh, a budget that needs to be done by April 1st. We may be able to cancel this month and I can update the board once I know for sure.
Are there any other boards and commissions that we should consider? And, and I know that some of them have their own, but, you know, that's definitely within a county department. So I think we should look at Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning and, and have some discussion and some direction, maybe.
Conceptual review?
Yeah, we have conceptual review, which is held in this building with other departments. Um, sometimes we invite other city representatives if the request is within two miles of the city.
Can those be done, um, some circulating documents rather than in-person?
I think so. To my knowledge, it can be.
Now, they're at the public meeting, though, and that's, we still have to follow Chapter 21.
Is conceptual review a public meeting?
We've been posting agendas and?
Yeah. The conceptual review comes about through development applications, Seminole. And, um, it is part of our ordinance that, that will have conceptual review. I don't know that it actually specifically states that it's in-person or electronic.
Ethan, do you have an opinion on that? Would you look into it? Thank you very much. Add it to your, your ever-shortening list, Ethan.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Anybody else have something they thought of since they, they had the floor, so to speak? Seeing nobody move to the microphone, as we say, we will close that. And, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I will move that we go into closed session for discussion and consideration of act, activating the continuity of operations plan, the continuity of government, um, as described under Iowa Code, Section 21.5K.
I will second that.
Any further discussion, if not Hiddon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We'll go into closed session. We have Conference Room A reserved for the closed session. And the three staff members, I asked before if you would, uh, come with us, we would appreciate it. Or wait, you know, I just thought of something. That's a fairly small room and we will have quite a few people. Can we open it to Conference Room B or should we just have the closed session here?
It is, it's tight, so.
Shelley, what are you saying?
They always moved it to the conference room because, uh, people can hear.
Otherwise through the door or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We had it that way.
Thank you. Let's, let's move to Conference Room A and open up the B side as well, if that's okay with the auditors. Was somebody able to find you a cup of coffee or something?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay. It's 12 minutes afternoon on, on March 17th, and the Story County Board of Supervisors is back in open session. And we're ready to, um, address Item 4, Discussion and Consideration of Activating Continuity of Operations Plan, Continuity of Government. Is there discussion or is there a motion?
I would like to, um, uh, suggest that we, um, move on to the, that we postpone this until we have gone to item number five. And then, um, oh, I just saw my attorney grimace a little bit. Okay. Um, but if you would prefer, all right, I'll make the motion. Okay. All right. Since, since I saw my attorney, so all of a sudden get a little green in the face there. All right. I move that we adopt the COOP COG Plan on the overriding principle of providing essential functions, but that there be individual, uh, there will be, um, individual discussions on how that plays out.
Who's that?
Yeah, I know.
Do you need a second first or can I ask a question first?
Ask. Oh, second, yeah.
Second, discussion.
Okay. Like a second with discussion then. So just for clarification, so you are moving to activate the COOP COG, but you're wanting some discretion. I, I understand, I heard you say with the essential functions. Are you then wanting more information from the individual departments to know what capacity? I mean, we heard from them earlier. I just want some clarification. The capacity for, uh, continuing those essential some functions to the public? I'm just, I'm just a little unclear. I'm a little unclear because it was a, it was a lengthy motion.
Right. I'm more interested in making certain that, given some of the time, the immediacy of some of this, um, that we let the staff know and let the public know that we are going to, um, look to the COOP COG to help direct us when it comes to a provision of essential functions, but that how that is actually carried out, given that it's not really spelled out when you're still in the same building, et cetera, that we're gonna have to make some individual decisions or motions related to what we do. That's really what I'm after. And we're.
Would you like to try to restate your motion?
I'm trying. And, oh, good. Thank you, Ethan, for bailing me out here, okay?
Yeah, I think you would just want to, um, set forth that for the reasons discussion closed session, um, you'd recommend activation of COOP COG and that you would, staff recommendations would come forward for future board action.
Wow. Excellent.
Could you restate that, Ethan?
So for the reasons set forth in closed session, you're moving that you activate the COOP COG, continuity of operations, continuity of government. And then that you'll be, uh, in accordance with the COOP COG, you'll be getting recommendations from staff and a CCMT on what board actions necessary.
Exactly what he said. Thank you.
Now, do you want to withdraw your previous motion?
Yes, it was poorly stated.
Are you acceptable with that?
I'm acceptable with that.
And what Ethan has said, Shelley, do you have that for the record in case Lois wants to make that as a motion?
Okay. I so make that motion as stated.
I'll second.
Is there further, thank you, Ethan. Is there further discussion? If no further discussion, Olson?
Aye.
Hiddon?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The COOP COG is activated. Now, we will move on to number five, updates on COVID-19 situation. And I believe that we have LeAnn Harder and Sandra King are going to give us some updates. If somebody wants to use the microphone up here, that's fine. Social distancing, you know.
So, prior to starting closed session and, and coming back into open, um, session, the board did hear concerns from elected officials and department heads, um, throughout Story County regarding potential office closures or needs for office closures and, and how we are able collectively to continue to successfully serve the citizens of Story County. Um, with that, um, as part of what I think would be a weekly or every time the board meets, update, um, I think it would be prudent for the board to direct staff to come forward with recommendations, um, that how we may be able to approach potential office and building closures in a manner that continues to provide services to the citizens of Story County. Um, I would recommend that staff be directed to come back with that, that approach. Um, consider directing staff to come back and maybe even later today with that approach for consideration. And since the COOP COG team is now act, or COOP COG is now activated, um, I'm able to reach out to the COOP COG management team for some, some feedback as well for those that were not here today.
Do you anticipate?
LeAnn, do you anticipate that, um, if we took a recess, that you would be able to come back to us later and, um, say, and like if we recess till 3:30 or whatever, you would be able to come back to us and have those recommendations?
That is the intention. If staff is directed to do that, yes, we will, we will do our best.
Do we need a motion or do you just need to agree on direction to staff?
I think it's just an update for COVID-19. It would just be direction to staff.
Are we okay then with directing staff to come forward later, later today with recommend, with, um, recommendations for potential office closings?
So just for clarification, Madam Chair, um, when we talk about later today, would we then be looking at recessing this meeting or would we?
We can recess with, if we come back in session within four hours. I would say we still have some actions here that we will be taking before we would recess. So let's say tentatively, we will recess when we're done with a tentative plan to come back at 3:30 today to hear your recommendations. Is that acceptable to the other two supervisors?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Direction to staff then. Thank you. Thank you very much. We, that, and was it, okay.
So there were, we were, I know I was asked at least to get updates on a couple of different, um, essential services, et cetera, to provide during the update today. Um, Lisa, you were asked to get a couple also, right? So would this be the appropriate time during COVID updates?
Yes, we do still have somebody waiting for, for another agenda item. So I would, and we have a few other considerations to do, which we can do quickly. But I, I think, um, let's just go through and do them very quickly. Would you start?
Sure. Um, so, uh, HERDA, uh, because they're moving people around the community, HERDA is still operating. Um, there have been some drivers who have asked for leaves of absence. So therefore, in some communities, right now it is not Story County, but in some of the other counties, they are move, they are providing services with only two drivers. So they are trying to get social distancing done, put in also for that they, uh, for the clients. Just to let you know, a lot of the human service agencies have canceled because they're self-isolating. And as a result, um, so we may be able, HERDA may still be able to provide. Um, I checked in with, um, United Way, who's actually assembling information for Keith Morgan also, um, about the food pantries. And all but one of the food pantries are anticipating they will still be open at least this week. Um, and they're hoping to try and still continue to provide services. Of course, the hunger collaboration will meet on Thursday. We're meeting by phone and we'll be discussing about just how do we get food into those food pantries at that particular point in time. And I spoke with, um, Dan Colhane from the A D C yesterday afternoon. Last Thursday, I believe it was, the A D C put a poll out to its members asking about their concerns and what they felt the impact would be of COVID-19. Um, Dan said the response was quote-unquote tremendous as far as the number of people who replied. The, uh, common themes were, number one, concerns about supply lines staying open for them to get in their materials and get in, to be able to conduct business. That's a real concern. The second common item that was, came up were that they were already limiting staff hours and, uh, part-time people are being laid off. Then he did share with me that there, he said, uh, there are five companies in the, uh, Story County who have indicated that they are having to use their lines of credit at the bank to stay open right now. And that's just as we get started. The, so in summary, the business community is very, very concerned about what this is going to do to our economy. So I think that runs me down. Okay?
So I had two meetings. Um, one was the Story County Board of Health. Um, we met last night, or they met last night. We had an update from our local public health. We also had, um, uh, the Iowa Department of Public Health was present and Keith Morgan with our emergency management was there to provide information as well. Um, just as we were sitting in the group last night, we had another case, uh, that came across the news of, um, another case in Urbandale area of COVID, positive COVID, or potential positive COVID-19. Um, they did say that, um, Mary Greeley Medical Center and the Story County Medical Center have both activated their Incident Commander Center. Um, ISU has also activated that. Um, supplies and testing unfortunately are still in short supply. Um, and so that is a concern for the medical personnel. They are wanting to test everyone. Um, and right now they are having to meet certain criteria in order to test anyone. Um, and so that is of concerning to them. The Board of Health is, there was discussion on, because they do have authority for quarantining, et cetera. So they are gonna have a training session with Keith Morgan on Friday, um, just having better understanding of that code section because there are some new members on the board, um, and what that, what, what that means and what that, what their authority actually is. So, um, purely just information only for them, just so that they, in a situation, if they would have to quarantine, whether it is specifically one individual or something larger, they, they have an understanding what, what their authorities and what those implications are as well. Um, secondly, I was on a phone call, um, regarding childcare, because I know that's been an issue, um, within the county. When you have the schools that have all closed, uh, for four weeks, um, we've got, um, uh, I know that the Ames Community Preschool was closing, Boys and Girls Club closing, you've got the library that's closed, um, Parks and Recs that have closed, um, and parents that still have to work. And also looking at the difference of children that you have. You have children that are not in school yet, who were already needing childcare. And you have kids that were in school, but, you know, a six-year-old, first grader would still need childcare, but a 13-year-old may not, for example. Um, they're still working as to what, you know, how to, um, address the childcare needs. I know that some childcare centers, um, are also beginning to close as well. Um, they did say that they are, and that's where Keith spoke this morning, about working with United Way on those, addressing those essential services such as fire, police, um, your medical personnel, your jail personnel, um, as well, ensuring that those folks, so that they can do their jobs in that emergency situation, that childcare is covered. Um, but then also trying to look at that broader extent of things. Um, but, uh, that's just, um, they're beginning of kind, starting to coordinate that. So that's what I have on those, uh, those particular two things going on. And that will be ever-evolving. I know the childcare meeting, they anticipate having further phone call conversations, um, but at least this is the first one to kind of get it generated. I'm going on people thinking about it and getting some general information of what's going on throughout our, our communities.
I'm really glad that people got on that childcare issue so quickly because I think that's gonna be huge for everybody.
Yes.
I've spent a lot of the last week, um, you know, just talking with staff, talking with elected officials, uh, met with the sheriff a couple of days ago, got an, got an update. Um, I have asked, by the way, that any departments or offices that send out press releases, send them to the all, uh, department head and elected officials, um, and, and to LeAnn. So, so that we all know what messages we're getting out. Um, and we did see the sheriffs on the visitation earlier. Um, I've also been talking with Keith Morgan and emergency management. I've been talking with some of the mayors and we're planning to reach out to all of the mayors to just get some assessment of what's going on in some of the smaller communities and maybe just have some conversation about how they can help each other if they have essential services that end up being disrupted. You know, we think about humans beings, we think about personnel, and what we don't sometimes tie is personnel to infrastructure. sometimes tie is personnel to infrastructure, water, sewer, those kinds of things. And some of the small communities, we realize, don't have departments for utilities or public works that are very deep. So we're trying to start some conversation there about how communities might need to help each other in the event that, that disruptions go past, you know, some of the things we've been talking about here as a county in terms of workforce, but go to, you know, public health, public works, those kinds of things.
Who are we, who is?
The emergency management.
Got it. Thank you. I missed that part of it.
Okay. I think that's, yeah, there's some other things I could update. I think that's the thing right now is to let everybody in the public know that, that you've just heard about a lot of things that are going on, that there is planning that's going on. We're trying to anticipate things, but as we, as we say, it's ever evolving and it's, it's going to continue to evolve. So we will get information out on our website, on our Facebook page, and all our phone numbers for the county are there and we'll try to help get more information out as we're able to. Anything else on COVID-19? Okay.
No, that it just, I would just say that it's ever evolving and we just have to continue to seek the most up-to-date information.
Yeah. And hoping that the news media can help us get information out as possible. And, okay. Let's go on to public comment.
Ted?
Yes. Public comment number one, comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Treasurer Ted Rasmussen.
Treasurer Ted Rasmussen, just to clarify for us in the group, what you instructed Leanne to do? You instructed her to reach out to members and bring information back to you?
No.
Or you were asking us to attend a meeting at 3:30?
No, neither. What we directed staff to do was bring to us a recommendation that we can operate on regarding whether we should close offices to the public. And maybe others, but that, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. Any other public comments? Seeing nobody move to the microphone, I will close public comments and I will go on. We have, we have received written reports from HERDA and Lutheran Services of Iowa, unless there's a need to talk about those, just refer everybody to the written reports. We gave them the option of not coming in person today and they both took that option. Any comments? If not, then I would move on to consideration of minutes. We have minutes for the March 3rd and the March 10th meeting and the March 10th canvass of the election. I think we can do those all at once. I would entertain a motion for approval of the three sets of minutes.
So moved. Second.
Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Consideration of personnel actions, I would entertain a motion of personnel actions as listed.
I would so move. Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Consideration of claims, I would entertain a motion for, for approval of claims as listed.
So moved. Second.
Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items as listed.
I so move. Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda approved. On to public hearing items, item 12 has been pulled until further notice and that was because of the, it was the ordinance on pumping out of septic tanks and some other related issues. We knew there was a lot of interest in that, so we are just not going to do that at this point in the interest of social distancing and keeping people at home. So we're not going to take any action until we've had public hearings on it.
Just for clarification on that, so I know that that ordinance had a, a potential May 1st implementation date. So since we are not having the public hearings.
It will not be implemented.
It will not be, okay. Just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll just move it ahead and when we finally get to it, still have to republish and there'll be a new date.
Great, thank you.
We'll go through the whole process. Item 13, there are no additional items. Item 14, there are no departmental reports. Item 15, there are no other reports. Upcoming agenda items, is there anything we need to discuss at this point?
Not for me.
No.
Okay. Nothing there. Public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. I'll open the public forum number two. Are there any comments? Seeing nobody move to the microphone, I'll close public forum number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. I'll just say I have none besides what we did on, on the COVID-19 issue. Does anybody else? I see Ethan Anderson.
No.
No.
Next item.
Next. Oh, okay. You're just getting ready for the next item. Okay. Anything we need to discuss now?
Nothing. All my meetings are by telephone.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe all mine are going to be, sorry, I'm just pulling up just real quick, are going to be by telephone as well.
Meeting of Department of Correctional Services for Friday was canceled and I, not even by telephone, they just canceled that one. So I don't think I've, I don't think I have any meetings that are coming up at this point. No. Okay. Item 19 is a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5 Sub 1 Subsection C. So I would, to discuss strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose stated.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We will go to closed session with our attorney.
Recording. Yeah. And one, get your mics on, back on.
Thank you.
Is it going? Yep. Okay.
It is March 17th, 2020, and it is now 1:14 PM and we're returning to open session of the Story County Board of Supervisors. We are on agenda item 20, discussion and consideration of appeal of Polanski versus Story County Board of Adjustment. Ethan Anderson, want to ask you what you would like to say?
Yes, it would be the recommendation of the county attorney's office that we pursue an application for further review with the Supreme Court in this matter to offer clarification on a, on a point of law. I would just add that as we discussed in closed session, there's the pros and cons here for the county and then the cost is minimal to the county. So for the reasons set forth in closed session and the minimal cost involved here, the county attorney's office is recommending that we pursue the appeal in this matter.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Anything? Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Questions carried. On our agenda, it says that we're going to adjourn, but in fact, I would entertain a motion for us to recess until, and to reconvene within four hours, probably around 3:30. Are the staff are ready?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are recessed until approximately 3:30, until later today.
Yes, you are and they're having too much.
It works. It's still March 17th, 2020. It's now 3:32 PM and we're reconvening the regular Board of Supervisors meeting of Story County. And pretty much same people are here who were here before. We are reconvening for the purpose of hearing a, we directed staff earlier to bring us some recommendations. They are finishing those up right now. So in the meantime, I'm going to ask Ethan Anderson, because we had a question for him earlier about how we can take action during, during this kind of situation. So I would like, I'd like Ethan to read a code section for all of us that he just pointed me to.
Yes, we were talking earlier about emergency meetings and the posting requirements for the agenda. We're discussing 21.4 to B. And it says, when it is necessary to hold a meeting on less than 24 hours' notice or at a place that is not reasonably accessible to the public or at a time that is not reasonably convenient to the public, the nature of the good cause justifying the departure from the normal requirements shall be stated in the minutes. And I think in this case, the reasonable cause, stay in the minutes would, COVID-19, I think would suffice to allow the board to take an emergency action here.
Okay. And you did also check with some other folks, right?
Yeah, so I talked to Brett Johnson with IPID and they're fielding lots of calls today.
I'm sure they are.
And yesterday, mainly on electronic meeting issue, but also on these types of issues from different counties. And he said, give whatever, give whatever notice is reasonable. In this case, I think we can rely on the fact that we discussed this this morning. The board discussed this. We activate, the board activated COOP COG. The board solicited opinions and from all the different departments. I think that constitutes a form of notice and would justify the board acting on the recommendations from different departments and elected officials. And again, I caution that the board has the authority or the department heads, but elected officials have control over their own offices. And so whatever directive that would be, would just be an encouragement or request to elected officials.
Any questions for Ethan?
None. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the help and appreciate the person at IPID, maybe pass our thanks and gratitude on to them for all that they're doing to help us in a situation like this. Okay. Let's, we're just going to stand by for a couple of minutes. I think we're pretty close to having some information to look at. Is there anything but? Lucy, did you have something you wanted to share with us?
Just related to my comments this morning about deadlines, the Department of Management did extend the budget certification deadlines until May 1st?
April 30th.
April 30th, sorry, for cities and counties. Those were originally due March 31st, so.
So there was a public hearing scheduled, there is a public hearing still scheduled for next Tuesday for the budget. If, I did contact the Department of Management, if that is not held, no, if, if the determination is, is made to wait, wait to do this public hearing to sometime in the next month, we have to republish 24-hour notice, or, excuse me, 10 to 20-day notice, all that stuff.
Yeah.
So is, this is March 17th, so it's about six weeks. And it's hard to predict what will happen in six weeks. We may say that might be a better time to have a public hearing, but we may still be, from everything that we're seeing, we still may be in the midst of what we have right now or worse. So I, that's a difficult one. If we do, if we do postpone the public hearing, we have to have notice by Thursday to get in the papers? Is that, can anybody help me with that?
Ethan, you know, the rule is on postponing a public hearing, the publication.
The publication started out?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It was in the paper on the 12th.
We, we did one for the, for the, we, we just took it off the agenda for this morning, the one for the septic ordinance, because I was told that was okay to just take it off. We could just take it off.
And we have to publish.
Yeah.
Do we have to republish?
Yeah.
We'd have to republish.
We have to determine a date to have it and republish.
Okay.
It has to be not, before and after.
It's 10 to 20 for budget.
My, here's, I'm just going to give my opinion. We knew with the septic ordinance that we were going to have a lot of people and we were concerned about social distancing, we were concerned about that. Normally, do we have many people here for budget hearings? And I see Lisa Markley saying, shaking her head back and forth, no. So.
No, actually, the last probably four years, I think the most people, or the majority of, I don't even know if we've had public, it's made or missed.
Okay. And since you're not up here, I'm just going to say for the record that Assistant Auditor Markley said that she doesn't remember having members of the public at previous hearings.
Not a substantial member.
Not substantial.
Not substantial. Now, they also have the option of writing, sending comments, things like that. We've, we've read those into public comment before, or into comment before too.
I'm going to, I'm going to just suggest that we consider going ahead and having the public hearing.
I don't have any problem with doing it next week. I, I agree, there's not a lot of input that the public do. I suspect it will be more discussions among us. I think you expect a long discussion, but, but we already published the maximum amounts, you know?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so.
Yeah, we can't, we can't raise the budget at this point.
We can't raise it, you know, and, but what we may want to do of other things related to the economy, yeah. But I, I think next week's fine.
And I'm fine with that as well, just because you don't know future wise, you might as well plan to hold it next week and, you know, hope, hope things are still all right.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. Better decision. We will have the public hearing as, as we have notified. Now, we have Leanne Harder and Sandra King have a report for us. They've worked incredibly hard this afternoon. We just gave them a few hours. They took an additional step, which we didn't ask them to do, which was send out a brief survey to all department heads and elected officials, asking for, any additional thoughts that we didn't gather this morning, and we gathered a lot this morning? So if you would, I said bring 20, that might not have been enough copies. I apologize if it wasn't.
Can you add more?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We have the requested memo and I'd like to read it for the record when you're ready.
Please do.
March 17th, 2020, to the Board of Supervisors, from Sandra King, Director of External Operations and County Services, Leanne Harder, County Outreach and Special Projects Manager. Subject, recommendation to modify service delivery of county departments and offices due to the Corona, Coronavirus Disease 2019 or COVID-19 threat to public health. As you know, when the Board of Supervisors was meeting this morning, Governor Reynolds issued a state of public health disaster emergency and modified the service delivery for restaurants and closed certain entities like bars and recreational facilities in response to the Coronavirus Disease 2019 or COVID-19. As acknowledged at today's Board of Supervisors meeting, response to the threat that COVID-19 poses to the health and welfare of Story County residents and employees is necessary. It is prudent for the Board of Supervisors to take recommended steps to keep employees and residents safe. While the Center for Disease Control, or CDC, has a website that offers good advice on how people can protect themselves, much about the virus remains unknown and the situation is continually changing. Because it is impossible for staff to know whether or not people we come in contact with have the virus, we are being advised by health experts and recognize that business as usual is no longer an option. And we can tell that just by the way we're seated here today. Moreover, we are aware of multiple organizations having already taken steps at this level and beyond to protect their employees and residents. At the referenced meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to collect feedback from departments and elected officials regarding their desire to close county offices. We have received comments and have summarized them as follows. One of the main questions we asked them is, for your office or department, do you want to close facilities to the public but have employees continue to deliver county services in another format? And we summarized this by building. Administration, seven said yes, two said no. Animal shelter, yes. Conservation, yes. Human Services Center, yes. Justice Center, two, yes. Secondary roads, yes. Out of an abundance of caution, it is recommended that the departments and offices close to the public but remain open for business effective 12:00 PM noon on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. Because of the use of the Justice Center and Human Services Center by state agencies, those buildings themselves remain open until those situations change.
Could I, I'm sure we'll all have some questions, but I just see one I want to start out with. When you have administration, that's the administration building and all the offices in this building. The first line, okay.
Yes, except for the Board of Supervisors, which was not.
So you got treasurer, recorder, auditor, and assessor?
We didn't get the assessor, right?
You did get the assessor. So you've got nine, so I wanted to, did you have more than?
Two no, we had two no's.
Okay, but there's four, okay. Who else did you send it to here?
It's for, this floor, the auditor, and then the treasurer, the recorder. Assessor did not get it, but planning and development, IT, environmental health, emergency management.
Okay.
Why didn't the assessor get it?
I think Wayne's been doing some other stuff.
It was very short notice, so.
Got it, okay.
But he was here so he could speak.
Thank you, I was going to say.
He said, "If I have not gotten it, I haven't been in my office."
I gotcha, okay, thank you.
So planning and development, IT, environmental, excuse me, everybody? I'm trying to, yeah. So treasurer, recorder, auditor, planning and development, IT, environmental health, emergency management.
LeAnn has the tally, and we'll go through each one.
Facilities management. And I'm not asking who said yes, who said no, I'm just wanting to make sure we got who wrong we got.
That is everyone excluding now the Board of Supervisors office. We also got human resources.
HR, you did get HR, okay. So.
And there's a qualified yes on the part of the county auditor, who mentioned this morning that there is a need to be able to take signatures or petition papers by hand, filings by hand. So she's indicated that willingness to sit at the front area. So that's something for the board to discuss. If this building is closed, how is that managed? And then one of the two no's was qualified later on. It actually is in support of that, so it would be, since we went to press in the past five minutes, so it would be an eight to, I don't want to make it like a competition, eight to one, but in support of it.
The reason I'm interested in who were the no's is not, is like, because Lucy's got a legitimate reason, and then we can talk about maybe, maybe are we only open a few days for Lucy to sit out there? I mean, you know, the front door is open, okay? And so that was why I was interested in who else might feel that they have a need at some point or some days to have at least the front doors open.
So just for clarification, too, you're saying that just technically one, not two are in the no pile? Okay, that one qualified itself, gotcha, okay.
I, you're supposed to qualify, you're good.
You're qualified, okay. Yeah, there would be some questions in terms of the auditor, but you know, honestly, I would say a way that they could, you know, maybe resolve that need to have somebody watch the front door would be for the offices in this building, perhaps, to just the elected officials and department heads, just to meet and work out a system. And I would rather you folks did that than we tried to dictate it from the board table, quite frankly. Is that amenable to everybody?
I'm not quite sure I understand.
Yeah, I'm not understanding either.
If there's a need to have somebody, if there's a need to have somebody at the front door, because people may come in and need to do business with the auditor, maybe, I was saying, could the heads of the offices in this building just get together and figure out a way to jointly try to do something there?
If I can.
Please.
Interject. What other, some other auditor's offices are doing is there's just notes on the door saying, and also on the website, that if you need to file papers, contact the auditor's office. I know people don't read signs, not everybody has access to websites and things like that. So I would like there to be something down there where somebody's waving to get in, if they're there to file papers, and I can bring them on in and process them.
You wouldn't have a problem.
But if they could call ahead and make an appointment, I'm also willing to do that.
But you wouldn't have a problem with the doors being locked as long as there was somebody there to answer a question?
Right.
Okay, I think that, then you folks could work that out. Is that okay?
Lucy, can I ask you another question? So the main things that you need, sorry for my, trying to look back at my notes, is people that need to file, yeah, file for elections or whatever, and what else was it? Because I thought you said there were a couple of different things.
It was the budget certifications, but that was actually pushed by the Department of Management. We got direction while we were in the meeting this morning, saying that the deadline has been extended to April 30th. So we will have, what we'll do is reach out. If we do indeed close, we could talk to the cities and have the city clerks call us and let them in as necessary to file their paperwork. But we have a little more time than we thought we were going to have.
Treasurer?
Treasurer Ted Asmussen, we had a request that the front doors stay open with each individual office closing their doors to the public, primarily because our current drop box in the parking lot is not especially large, and it cannot accept envelopes over six inches wide. So we were hoping also, we're worried people who want to drop off their check will be scared about leaving it out in that drop box. That said, we can still direct people to mail or to online, but if the front door could be open, we had secured a ballot box from Lucy that was going to become the new treasurer's drop box outside my office.
What would you think about putting a drop box in the vestibule and closing, locking the inner doors and having it in the outer vestibule? Or rather not?
I don't think the inner doors can lock.
They can't.
Right, right.
That would be the only, I don't know, I don't think we were included in that, but that was our request, we can live without it, but we think it'd make the public more comfortable if they could bring those payments inside and dump them, and we would keep our doors locked.
Joby, what would you like to add?
Just the feasibility of locking the inner doors is virtually impossible at this point.
Joby, if it stays?
Sure.
Because I have a question for you.
Joby Brogdon, Facilities Management Director.
Okay. So my thought, the other thought about if the front doors are left unlocked during what we consider our normal hours, Monday through Friday, all right, does that change how you would staff the building? Would you still have a day staff here because there's a lot of vulnerability, you know? So you'd have people who'd be running, at least somebody on site from a security standpoint. But would it change?
Essentially, it wouldn't change. The staff would stay the same.
All right.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I want to social distance. We do have a camera mounted, the other reason why this is a little more secure is we do have a camera mounted that facilities maintains at the front door, and we have another one outside my office door. So we would have two cameras monitoring anyone who came in to either drop at the drop box or, you know, provide a little more security over the drop box. So that was why we requested that.
Why don't we ask that Joby meet with all the department heads in this building? Just have a meeting for an hour or so, and, because I'm sure other things will come up. And if you, you can make some decisions, you can let everybody know. If it's something that requires board action, you can bring it back to the board. Does that, is that feasible, is that okay? Any other questions?
Just what you were just saying again, you want Joby to meet with each individual department person, or?
I want them to meet together.
Oh, everybody together to discuss whether it's better to leave the doors unlocked? Is that what you're headed after?
That and any other issues that come up about that, about what we might be doing here today, if we in fact do it, that I just don't, I think they know the building. I would just assume they got together and brought anything back to the board that they need. You know, either tell us, here's what we've decided, these are just operating procedures, or if it's a policy issue or a resource issue, they need help to come back to us.
Okay, so we may not be making a decision on the admin building today.
I think we are.
Well, then if you've asked them to go meet.
I'm saying to, I'm saying to work out any details. I'm not saying.
Thank you, okay.
Sorry, one last thing. Based on about 48 treasurer's offices closing around the state, we intended to close the treasurer's office to the public, just the massive amount of foot traffic, regardless tomorrow morning. We have been telling customers that our office would be closed first thing in the morning. We will wait and see what the decision is of the board. I like it when the county is unified in what we do. So if the decision is to follow the, what was put in the recommendation, we will probably go with the rest of the county and close at noon rather than close in the morning. But we were telling customers who called in that we were going to close, be closed to the public tomorrow.
Thank you, Ted. Is there anybody else who needs to give us some more information?
Recorder Stacy here, to share with me, to share with the board, a summary of counties throughout Iowa. I did a rough count, but I think it's like 60 of the 99 counties, definitely a majority, are closing. It's everything from closed to public, offices still operational, to by appointment only. And these, some are county-wide, then some are recorder-specific. But we do have a list available, if the board would like to see it.
And just, because I didn't hear a couple of the words, all right? So you were saying some are doing by appointment only, and some are completely not seeing people at all.
Right, the notes are, notes are varied. Closed to public as of 3:19, closed to public until further notice, appointments only effective 3:18, limited services and staff. These are what are in, the recorder's listserv probably, and the comments that are being put in there, is what I would assume.
So does our recorder have a thought about wanting the front doors open?
I think I'm willing to work with the other department heads. What I visualize is having our door closed to public access, and then if someone, if there's an emergency situation, or I do have abstractors that need to search property to record documents, and it's in the code that we really need to record those within 24 hours. So those are those situations that it may be by appointment only. That will be, make sure that everyone knows that. It may be at 2:00 to 3:00 every day. That, those are just things that we need to work out, but.
Those are some of the details you need to flush out.
Right, exactly. And you know, as, actually, it was our recorder president, or recorder association president, that gathered this information, and the emails were just come flying in because, you know, there's boards meeting now, there's boards meeting tomorrow. So it's just one of those things, and we really appreciate all of your work that you've done with this, because this is one of those situations that we've never had to do before, so.
Thanks, Stacy. And yeah, we'll be continuing to come up with issues we've never dealt with before, so. And I want to thank, I want to, anybody else before we, the board deliberates? I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank all of you who came this morning and gave us information, or gave us information over the phone, or talked to one of us in the past few days. I particularly want to thank LeAnn Harder and Sandra King and Noel McClatchy for all the work that they did, and to LeAnn and Sandra for taking the last few hours and getting this, getting all this information and getting this report to us. I think it really helps guide us to make a good decision, and it won't be the, it won't be the last time we'll be calling on you for some quick work here, I know. So thank you very much for all that you've done, and will continue to do. So is there any further, Ethan, you wanting to say something more to us?
It looks like the sheriff does, too.
The sheriff, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
I would just add, as part of our discussions in the past week or so, you and I have discussed Iowa Code 331.301, and the broad discretion granted to board supervisors over county property. I would just advise that any motion, you include that in addition to the COOP COG and the COVID-19 situation.
So pursuant to Code Section 331.301 and our 301. Gotcha. Okay. Sheriff?
Paul Fitzgerald, Story County Sheriff. As I understand, you're going to be putting out a press release in, is, will this be for all county offices?
We'd like to put one out for all county offices, but we'll need to specialize some things about your building and about the human services. And I don't know that we'll get it out yet today, unless we've got one in the can, and it might have to be tomorrow morning.
Well, we've, in my office, we've been working on some releases that we're preparing. And we'd be happy to do that in conjunction with you. But if, you know, when you guys have it ready and want to put it out, put it out. And that won't necessarily prevent us from giving some further instructions for.
That's.
Things such as registering sex offenders, to weapons permits, to things like this, and how we're going to be handling those situations.
I think that's a good point, because you have a lot of considerations that are not general county government considerations. So we wouldn't presume to encroach upon that.
Okay.
I think that that sounds like a good plan. LeAnn, do you think we can get something out early in the morning? Maybe today, okay, thank you. Wait till we send out the general one, if you would be willing to do that, and then follow it up with the specifics for your individual office or a department.
Now, the Justice Center, the main doors will be open, I assume?
Yeah, I assume that we need to, because we've got the courts in there, we can't.
Yes, and.
I don't know if you can, if, I don't know that we need to post anybody there. I mean, it's kind of a business as usual, but since the courts are doing so much.
No, I'm not going to post anybody. I'm just thinking, the lobby going into the sheriff's office will be locked, but going, the corridor going into the jail will not, because defense attorneys still have to come in, people who want to post bonds still have to come in. And if there's any individuals who want to turn themselves in on warrants, have to have that opportunity to come in. So we'll outline all that in our follow-up release to what the county puts out.
Certainly, and.
Yeah. We're trying to get as few people in our jail as we can.
Thank you for coming over here this afternoon. Anybody else have anything that you think could be good for us to hear or think about right now? If not, then I think, oh, Joby.
We talked a little bit about this this morning, outside agencies using our conference rooms, primarily at the Human Services Center. Do we want to limit that or totally do away with it?
My sense would be, from what I've seen that other places have done, they have said City of Ames has totally done away with it. They've actually closed the library. If, and I think there's two things about that. One, we limit our exposure, and secondly, we reinforce that people are supposed to be staying home rather than meeting in public. If it's our individual staff meetings, you know, occupants of the building, I don't think it's a problem, you know? And it, but I don't think we, my personal preference would be that we not have the, our meeting rooms open to the public at this point, because there are so many places that don't anymore. We would be inundated, for one thing. And who's going to schedule that, then?
Yeah, I think, for example, like CICS, we don't know for sure that that has been canceled. You know, we've always met here, you could meet over at the other location. My assumption is that they're going to cancel, per the email I got earlier today. But if we had to meet, that kind of puts you in of a lurch in two days to figure out a meeting space.
I guess I was thinking if there's a board that we're a part of, I mean, that's a different thing.
Versus.
Planning and zoning, Board of Health, boards that we're a part of that provide services to county government. I'm thinking more outside agencies. Does that make sense?
Are you considering somebody like Boost?
Correct.
As an outside agency?
Correct.
Okay, that's a good clarification. Well, we have a representative on Boost, so that's what now Lindis has. So that's what now Linda's headed into is saying, we've got groups where we're a formal member of it. So you want us to make that distinction? Or what would you prefer, Joby? It's all or none, or?
Or what are you thinking? I guess I want to, some clarification. I do think we're going to probably see more, we already are seeing more that are going to phone conferences or maybe Zoom or Google meetings or whatever.
I guess my concern is, is it's going to be hard to determine, you know, do you say that it's, well, one of us serves on that board or we're a part of this committee, so we're going to allow it. But the majority of the people on that committee are outside agencies. So then it's hard to say no to somebody else when you're allowing. So I would either say just continue to allow it or none altogether.
Okay. Well, let me bring up, and since Jerry's here, Planning and Zoning Commission and Zoning Board of Adjustment. There may be meetings that he has to have. And that is providing a county function because those boards are operating under Planning and Development and are part of the process for them doing their work. So I don't think we could say we won't allow our own Planning and Zoning Commission or our own Zoning Board of Adjustment to use our meeting room.
So I'm going to look out at Ethan here, and I'm just thinking about CICS, all right? And well, I don't, Boost, I don't know that we're a formal 28E there. But CICS, we're 28E or et cetera. But if we're saying, sorry, we're not going to open for you, then what we're really saying is only if it is part of the county government function structure. That would be the differentiation.
Yeah, especially Planning and Zoning, they have a scheduled, we've worked out some schedule appeal here. That is happening.
Right. Okay. So just outside being anybody who is a 28E or even less of an association with the county?
So just. So let's keep going. And I don't want to get in the weeds here, but I think we have to at this point. Board of Health has training. Our county Board of Health has training in this room this Friday?
In the EOC room.
In the EOC. Okay. I think that the EOC, that's interesting that that comes up because obviously the EOC is going to be an exception because he is activating some of the functions right now. And he's going to be bringing, I mean, a lot of the people who staff the EOC when that happens are county employees, but he's also talking about volunteers because otherwise it's such a drain on the county because everybody are employees. So I think we need to recognize that EOC functions, your emergency management functions and the EOC can continue to use their.
Joby, would it be comfortable for us to ask staff to assemble a list for you? I mean, of approved meetings? How about that? But keeping in mind what you want is you want as few public people as possible, so therefore, but we would set our own parameters about.
And I don't think it's just for Joby's information. I think it's for all of our information. So would, LeAnn and Sandra, when you have come up for air next time, could you assemble a list? And if we think of any other meetings that might take place that we have, that the county has an interest in them taking place because it's the county services we're trying to maintain are dependent upon it, you know? And that, let's get those, that information. I've got a couple here, but everybody get that information to Sandra and LeAnn about any meetings that they think we need to in order to continue providing services that we need to allow to use space here. Well, convenient, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to say, somebody, no, go try to find a place. There aren't any, but you're doing our business. You know what I mean?
So are you wanting to then reconvene? I mean, not necessarily this particular meeting again and stuff, to know what that list is? Are you wanting to have discussion of, okay, instead of some meetings that have happened maybe over at the Human Services Building that they are no longer happening there, they need to happen here? Or?
I was thinking.
Or just more in the broader sense?
I was thinking. Go ahead, Sandra, if you have an idea.
I just wanted to point out that many of the organizations, the associations I'm a part of have been encouraging each other to either use the phone and do a phone meeting or something online. They're discouraging groups of people congregating on. I know that emergency management may have different concerns, but everybody else, you know, may be also having those same considerations.
And I think it'd be good if, Joby, had this list once we get it put together, however we do. And maybe you could ask somebody in your office to like send out something to all offices in the morning just so people know that there's a meeting going on or whoever's in charge of it. So, I mean, so we don't have a building that's not supposed to have people in it and all of a sudden people are wondering why. You've got to open the doors. It's going to be, to use our meeting rooms will take some coordination and some communication.
And Lisa, in response to your question, I wasn't envisioning a separate meeting or special meeting on that so much as I was as staff kind of looking at meetings and doing more of a little, can take, seeing what our parameters were and then can send it out. We may want to add somebody or after you create the list or it could be we go, oh, nope, slice it off. But I didn't envision a formal action on that one.
Good. So why don't you just do a list? Send, just send it out and say, did we miss anybody? Okay. And try to be, I guess, I think you're right that most places are not going to be having in-person meetings for several weeks. So I think it's going to be very few, but there's a few that just have to happen and we need to recognize that. Okay, that was good discussion, thank you. Anything else before we deliberate?
Well, just kind of related to that.
Wayne has something, I'm sorry.
I think she's wanting to go related to what.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I will add that when the COOP COG management team begins our meetings, that will be a topic. As Joby is wearing the reconstitution manager hat through this process as well. So there will be additional discussions through that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wayne Slerkret, County Assessor. Just wanted to, I think we've had this discussion in the past, we're going to send out about 2,500 assessment notices this Thursday where the people can appeal. And they can appeal between April 2nd and the 25th. And we're going to try to encourage, if the building is shut down, we have, I guess we have a plan how to make it work where we deal with them either through email or over the phone or by mail. Then once that period of time is gone by, we probably, starting next Mondays, we're going to start getting phone calls if there's questions. And it'll probably be for a couple of weeks. Then it kind of, it's kind of an off year, so we don't, aren't sending out as many as we normally do. But then the Board of Review, which is the local appeal board, comes in session May 1. And so anybody that's not happy through the informal hearings can go to that Board of Review. And typically in the past, you know, they can ask, they can just ask for a non-oral, they can ask for an oral hearing. And once in a while, we've had telephone conferences. And our plan is if somebody wants an oral hearing, that we're going to do it by conference call. And we hope that, I'm not sure if we get in a situation where somebody'd say, I don't want to do that. But I think under the circumstances, I would hope most people would be understanding the conference call works real well because we've done that in the past several times.
I think that by the time you get to those dates, there will be lots more going on and.
Yes, I think so, probably. It's just in the next week, we're going to have, you know, and I have no problem if you shut the building down or don't shut the building down, our office will be able to operate. But I've looked at a lot of other counties. I got a lot of emails floating back and forth also. And I saw one press release from another county where they listed every individual office and gave all the detailed information, phone numbers, what we call, which I thought was pretty good. They all handled them a little different, so.
I saw LeAnn nod her head at that, so that's, yes. That would be a good idea because I think the phones would be a, you can get a lot more done on a phone call, I think, of explaining to people why we're closed. And they can talk about frustrations and listen. You might end up with some fairly long phone calls, but it might help in terms of customer satisfaction, in terms of people understanding that we're, and I think the message we really need to say is, we're doing this for everybody. We're doing this to protect the public as well as protecting our employees' health so we could keep serving you, so. Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Margaret James, Environmental Health. So if our staff feels they need to stay home because that's what our president is now saying, what is our response to them?
We need to talk about that some more. I don't think we're, I think what we just decided to do today was talking about closing the buildings but maintaining services. I think there are some more HR issues that we still have to talk about. And I'm not sure that we're prepared to talk about them yet today, but we will be very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Looking around the room, is anybody else, before the board deliberates, does anybody else want to say anything or ask questions? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to start with Lisa and Lars.
No, I think we had good discussion. I appreciated everyone's input this morning on what's going on. I made a comment earlier today is what sticks in my mind. I think it's because I'm a news junkie and keep hearing Anthony Fauci speak about, it's always better to overreact than to underreact. Because I'd rather, guests be known, I have it on my Facebook page basically saying, you know, if we all do our part and nothing happens, just remember that's exactly what we want to happen. That's the point of it all. So for me, I appreciate that was all I'd hear, the input. Still trying to figure out the meetings in my mind, how that's going to work out. But I think as we continue to probably have some discussions, I think just like anything else, it's going to be ever-evolving. And we may be making, we may have said this is what we're looking at today, but gosh, come Friday or Tuesday, that may change because things with this COVID-19 is changing every day.
So Lisa had referenced Friday, so I just want to make note that the supervisors are leaving Friday mornings open. Now our schedule's open in case we have to have a second meeting, just so you know, okay? No need to block us all, you know, book us all up. Okay, so, yeah. I'm probably the one who's underreacting on this. Maybe it's denial, knowing that I'm probably vulnerable, so it's very susceptible to it, okay? So I've been listening to a lot of different voices who've had to really hammer in me that this is the right thing to do. So I just want to admit that, okay? But it is the right thing to do, okay? Everybody's convinced me. So my only comment would be that for the departments that report to the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to hope that there's a few discussions about some fine-tuning of availability, delivering services. I think Sue, we talked this morning about, geez, somebody's got to take those strays or, and those owner surrenders, you know, that kind of thing. But other than that, I'm ready to make a motion if, unless Linda wants to say something too.
I just want to thank everybody again for what's been a long day and for some people probably still going to be a longer day. And we're going to have lots of them and we're going to have to work together. And I know we will, I think I've said it before, we have a great team. I appreciate you all more than I can possibly say right now. And we will do our best for the residents of Story County, for our employees, to keep everybody healthy and safe. So thank you for all of that. And we're open for a motion.
I move that we close the Story County buildings, including all satellite locations, sheds, et cetera, to the public with the exception of by appointment per office and by some public, some meetings to conduct county business.
As, if I may amend.
Yes.
I think as referenced or part of Iowa Code 331.301, Section 1, is that correct? And in part with connection with our COOP COG and related to the COVID-19. Did I get that right?
Do we have a date and a time in that motion? And do we have that the Justice Center and Human Services Center will be, remain open? Because.
I amend my motion. First, I accept that friendly amendment. And I come back and I amend my motion to be effective noon, that's okay, Ted, noon tomorrow, Wednesday, March 18. And with the exception of the Justice Center and Human Services Center as they are being used by state agencies. With the time to remove this closure, closure to the public to be determined later.
Did we capture it, all of you, then?
Sure.
I will second that.
And I think everybody understands that we don't mean that all the individual offices in those buildings remain open. Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I did earlier at a different meeting. When I did, no, not, no, sorry, a different meeting.
I like the socks. Okay, if there's no further discussion, Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Let me go back to our agenda to see what else we might have. It looks like the last thing on our agenda then is adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Second?
Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. And you're right, because my two nieces who are Monahans and have actually been taken to Ireland would just be very. and have actually been taken to Ireland would just be very.